Good evening, I'm James Bell and tonight I'll be serving as chair. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for October 3rd, 2024. I want to make the first announcement, if you are here for Zone Case 3.1, number 2243E, it has been removed from the agenda and we will not be hearing it tonight. The first matter of business is citizens' comments. Do we have none set up, so we'll go through. We'll move next. Next matter of business is the approval of the minutes for the September 5th.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries five to zero. Next up are the zone cases. We will call them in order except for the very first item. When we call your case up, will you please come up, state your name and address for the record? First zone case that we will be hearing today is Zone Case Number 3.2, item number, or item 3.2, Zone Case 3847.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Padilla, this is Zone Case 3487. The applicant is DLC Designs LLC for Children's Home of Lubbock, requesting to rezone from SF2 to RE. We've sent out 38 notifications, receiving six in favor, zero in opposition. This property is located east of Idaloo Road, north of East Erskine Street. This is the notification map. This is an aerial view of the property. The property is mostly surrounded by vacant land. To the south is outside city limits, to the north is the Children's Home of Lubbock and a residential neighborhood. The current zoning is low-density, single-family SF2. The future land use plan designates this property for residential low-density. Here are photos of the property and its surroundings. Few site plans provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for residential low-density land use. The proposed zone change to RE would be in conformance with this designation. This request would be appropriate next to adjacent land uses and the RE zoning to the east. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and it will be appropriate at the proposed location. It is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The proposed rezoning location will be along east Erskine Street and Idaloo Road. East Erskine Street is designated as a principal arterial modified and Idaloo Road as a freeway. Staff recommends approval, I can take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, now open the public hearing. Is the applicant or representative here and care to make some comments?
Good afternoon, Amanda King with DLC Designs, 1318 North King here in Lubbock. Available if you have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, is there anyone to speak in favor of this request? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Let's take a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. Next item is zone, item 3.3, Zone Case 2565-H.
Hello, I'm Victoria and this is Zone Case 2565-H. The applicants are Endira and Vipul Patel. They're requesting a zone change from heavy commercial district to medium-density residential district. The subject property is located east of Avenue L and south of Avenue Q, South Drive. We sent out 69 letters, receiving none back. Here is an aerial view, the properties to the north are developed with a car wash and apartments. The eastern properties are developed with hotels. The southern property is developed with a hospital and the western properties are developed with single-family housing. The subject property is currently zoned heavy commercial district. The northern properties are zoned heavy commercial and high-density residential district. The eastern and southern properties are zoned heavy commercial district and the western properties are zoned low-density, single-family district. The future land use map designates this for commercial land uses. Here are some photos of the property and its surroundings. The future land use map designates this for commercial land uses. However, the proposed medium-density residential zoning would be an appropriate buffer for the existing single-family homes from Avenue Q, South Drive. Therefore, this request is in moderate conformance with the comprehensive plan principles and would be in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate at this location. The applicant is proposing an apartment complex for single-family units. This would be compatible with the surrounding area and would not change the character of the existing development. The master thoroughfare plan 2018 designates Avenue L as a local street and Avenue Q, South Drive, as a principal arterial. The intended use will be appropriate at this proposed location. Staff recommends approval and I can take any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you. We'll now open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his or her representative here and would like to make comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Kalpech Patel and my address is 501 Avenue Q, Lubbock, Texas. And we are proposed for zone changing here. If you have any question, I'm here to ask.
So, are you gonna, what are you gonna build here?
Sorry?
What are you going to build here?
We are planning for the single-family apartment complex over there.
Okay, cool. How many units?
Depends on how many parking lots and availability. Planning right now, each building, about two, three building and about 27 to 52 units.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, good evening.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone to speak in favor of the request? Okay, looks like moving quick here. We'll close the public hearing for a matter of discussion, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business is item 3.4, Zone Case Number 1542-V.
Hello, board, I'm Greg Hernandez with the Planning Department and this is Zone Case 1542-V. The applicant is Lubbock Smoke Shop LLC for Lubbock Commercial Buildings, Inc. Requesting a specific use for a smoke shop on property's own neighborhood commercial. The property is located west of Quaker Avenue and north of 74th Street. Twenty-nine letters were sent out, we received eight back in opposition. One of those was from outside the boundary. Here is a notification map showing the seven in opposition. Some of the reasons listed are the traffic congestion, limited parking, and negative effects caused by smoke shops and the smoke shops' bright appearances. Here's the aerial view of the property, to the north is a restaurant, to the east are commercial properties. To the south is an apartment complex and commercial property and to the west are offices. The current land use map shows the properties to the east zoned auto-urban commercial district, to the north heavy commercial, to the south high-residential district and neighborhood commercial district, and to the west is neighborhood commercial district. Here's a picture of the subject's property, as well as views to the south, north, and east. Here is the smoke shop request map showing that the location meets all requirements for the specific use. The proposed specific use is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at this proposed location. The proposed specific use is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing developments. The applicant is requesting a specific use to allow for a smoke shop. The location is on Quaker Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial and 74th Street, which is designated as a collector by the master thoroughfare plan 2018. And staff recommends approval of this request and I can take any questions at this time.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff? No? Okay, thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing, is the applicant or his or her representative here? When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Galav Hamud. Address 8491 FS Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm representing Lubbock Smoke Shop, Case 1542. Ladies and gentlemen, the Planning and Zone Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you to discuss multiple concerns. First, we are H&amp;B Management Company, started nine years ago in North Carolina, expanding multiple states, Nebraska, South Dakota, Kansas, Arkansas, operating 217 stores and 19 wholesalers with very honored reputation. Our company takes the steps forward to establish the first business in the state of Texas. With the startup of expenses $200 grand, anyway, our high priority is the neighborhood concerns, which is, we address as follow. First, we want to emphasize that we can support community with a safe alternative. They can foster an environment where local regulations are respected and restrictions are strictly enforced, thereby curbing illegal sales to minors. We don't sell any other products such as drinks, chips, that attract minors to the store. Also, we take into account appropriate zoning regulation by placing the smoke shop in the area that's not enclosed, approximately two schools, church, or hospitals. We mitigate concerns related to secondhand smoke and underage access as we use PO system with age verification built in for every transaction made. Secondly, the concern related to the professional appearance and large graphic and bold colors and gravities on the buildings. So, I've printed a couple of our front stores that we already made in other cities and other states. And if you don't mind, I will show you the drafts, how we made them. Thank you. That's, sorry. Third concern is the parking lot. I think establishment had more what it needs for the parking lot and any business will need a parking, obviously. But it will be less traffic with the smoke shop because the service over there is buy-and-go service, so we didn't need that much, it will be less traffic. Furthermore, by facilitating the establishment of well-regulated smoke shop, we can diversify our local economy. It can create jobs, contribute to tax revenues. This can ultimately support other local businesses in our area, fostering sense of community and economy synergy. I argue, esteemed members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, to consider the potential benefits of the smoke shop, not just as a retail space, but as a responsible, community-oriented entity that contributes positively to the city of Lubbock. Let's make informed, thoughtful decisions that reflect our commitments to economic development and thank you for your time and consideration to look forward to your support as we work together to shape Lubbock's future. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you bringing up some of the deals, responses to some of the concerns that some of the letters we had.
Thank you.
That's something very important to bring that up and discuss. Does anybody have any questions for him at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, is there anyone to speak in favor of the request? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for matter of discussions, do we have a motion?
For purpose of discussion, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussions?
So, the last smoke shop that I remember that we looked at, there was, I don't know if it was a school across the street.
We had one previously that was a strip center that we did. We had another one before that was a school that was closer to it, that kind of threw it out.
And there's nothing on?
There's not any school, anything there around over here?
No church.
Yeah, there's a daycare center back there, but it's not within that boundary.
I'm kinda torn on this one, I mean, that building's been sitting vacant for a long time. Needs to get something going there. I'm just not sold on this is the best thing for it. I mean, you've got the senior living deal, you've got the apartments.
Mm-hmm.
All those garden office deals behind it are real nice. I just don't know if it fits in. And I appreciate the applicant's, you know, like you mentioned.
Like you said, he was proactive on responding to it and that's.
But if we zone it for that, for his intent, it could stay there for whoever else in the future that might not have the same vision. So, anyway, just some thoughts from me.
Question for you, specific use stays forever?
It does stay with the property until if someone wanted to come in and rezone it at a later date.
On a major thoroughfare, on Quaker.
Mm-hmm.
Parking, traffic, he addressed. It's different, it's a unique spot and it has been vacant for a long time.
Yeah, it has been, for several years.
I do respect that the signage is not quite that as some of them.
As some as we had.
It's elaborate.
Yeah. Purple and green.
Okay. It's a lot.
Any other questions?
I'm trying to find the pictures of the surrounding neighborhood. I haven't found it yet. There we go. Well, it's not near a school. Is there a church in the neighborhood?
No.
It's not near a church. It's, from looking at this, it's not really very near. It's not just right in front of a neighborhood.
I think Brookdale's the only thing close behind it.
Mm-hmm.
If you'd like.
When you go down your list, it's checking the boxes.
Here's an area.
It's checking all the boxes. And, you know, I mean, you're going to have smoke shops and this looks like as good a place as any. Just how I feel about it.
It's true.
I agree. We've had a lot worse locations.
We've had a lot worse locations.
Any other comments, y'all ready to call a question?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Next is item 3.5, Zone Case 3257-Q.
Good evening, this is Zone Case 3257-Q. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for 1585 Development LLC. The purpose is to, for a zone change from low-density, single-family district SF2 to medium-density residential district. The property is located west of Elden Avenue and north of 137th Street. We sent out 72 notifications and have received four letters in opposition with one being outside of the Melo boundary. The one opposing letter within the 400 feet boundary expressed concerns that the value of single-family homes would be impacted. The homeowner mentioned that they were informed before purchasing the land that the proposed area was going, was intended to be a walking trail. Had they known in advance, they would have chosen another area to move. Here is an aerial view of the subject property. The future land use map designates this area for residential low-density land uses. While this request is a minor deviation from the designation, it is appropriate in this location adjacent to other multifamily uses and residential zoning districts. This request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The current zoning is residential low-density. The property to the west is zoned high-density residential district and is developed with apartment buildings. The properties to the north, east, and south are zoned SF2, including both existing and ongoing development of single-family homes. Here are photos of the subject property and the surrounding area. Here is a zoning map provided by the applicant indicating the specific section of land that is subject to the zone change. The future land use map designates this area for residential low-density land uses. While this request is a minor deviation from this designation, it is appropriate in this location adjacent to other multifamily uses and residential zoning districts. This request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The property is located adjacent to other apartment complexes. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and it will not change the character of the existing development. The proposed rezoning location is along 137th Street and Elden Avenue, which are designated as collector streets. Collectors provide access to and movement within residential and commercial and industrial areas. Staff recommends approval of this request and we can take any questions at this time.
Does anyone have questions for staff?
Can you remind us what MDR, what can be built in MDR?
Yes. The purpose of MDR is to provide a village neighborhood environment for smaller size lots, including dwellings such as duplexes, townhomes, and multiplexes. Do you have any additional questions?
Okay, we'll now open a public hearing, is the applicant or his or her representative here? Afternoon, Mr. Stevens.
Good evening, my name is Will Stevens with AMD Engineering at 651568th Street. I printed off some site plans, wasn't able to get these into the PowerPoint. I will pass these out. So, the plan for this property is to develop single-story apartments, one and two-bed, in a multiplex-type layout, as you can see in the site plan. Did everyone get one?
Hmm.
So, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, provide the site plan for you guys, point out the fact that it will be all single-story. Each building will have garages, you know, each unit will have a garage, whether it be one or two-bed. Totalling approximately 270 units of the whole development, so. I'll be happy to answer any other questions if you have them. Thank you.
I got one. So, on here, how many entry and exit points are there?
This plan shows one, this is a very early draft. There hasn't been a lot of work done on this site yet. You know, we would need at least two from, you know, code standpoint, so, you know, we will be adding another entry off of 137th Street.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Stevens at this time? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward and state your name and address for the records.
Good evening, my name is Diane Carthel. I'm a current resident of the Veridian Neighborhood. I live at 290438th Street. I'm just outside of the notification area, but this was brought up in our social media for our Veridian Homeowners Association and felt that I should be represented to make my concerns noted. This neighborhood was platted out and promised to the buyers as a single-family home neighborhood. Several people have bought homes in this neighborhood under that covenant, believing that we would be able to build equity in the Lubbock community. This may not necessarily hurt that, it could make it where it's stable, but I can't imagine that bringing in multiple slab trailer homes or apartments at single level would do anything to drive up the value of the homes that are currently existing. Additionally, the neighborhood is not necessarily handling the flow of traffic as it is. So, to increase the density of the housing that is going to go up in the future, it's going to make it difficult to get in and out of that neighborhood. Even when we finally get all the construction done, it's already tough. I mean, multiple neighborhoods crossing and out. And that's a concern. This neighborhood is not infrastructurally built to handle denser homes. Also, Lubbock traditionally builds neighborhoods that have a mix of housing. They have higher-level, single homes, they have middle-class, they have duplexes or garden homes and apartments. And if you look at every neighborhood in the established city, every neighborhood is played out like that. But this neighborhood is going to be smack dab in the middle of your $100 million infrastructure project in South Lubbock with houses that will not ever parlay up into the $400,000, $450,000 range. This is that area where those houses would have been built for this neighborhood, to balance out the neighborhood and keep the price levels level for everybody. Additionally, there's not a shortage of housing in Lubbock, so I don't know why we would take traditional, single-family plating and discard it for denser housing. Obviously, there's plenty of rental properties, plenty of houses for sale. So, I would think that we would want to focus this area on a higher-end home, something in the, with a larger lot, something with a permanent brick fence, something that would bring people to the neighborhood to balance it out across the board. Again, if you look at neighborhoods off of 82nd and Quaker, if you look at neighborhoods off of Indiana and 34th, that's the traditional building of the neighborhoods in the city of Lubbock. This would deviate from that completely and totally and make this more a neighborhood of rentals. And I don't think that that's what y'all want for your southward expansion. I don't know if, and the notification area that y'all proceeded to contact people to let them know that this was happening, I'm less than 150 feet from the notification area. I should have been notified that there was going to be a change to the way that we are going to plat and house the people in our neighborhood. The growth of this neighborhood is something that, it's personal investment for my family and many families and I hope that y'all will consider that when you are voting on this project to move forward. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Gannon, I reside in this area as well. I live at 2920 135th Street. This is P&amp;D Case Number 3257-Q. First and foremost, I want to know. First and foremost, I want to note that we received these notices last week, so the majority of us did not mail them in because we knew they wouldn't get back in time. Furthermore, the majority of our neighborhood, in fact, my neighbors that live directly adjacent to this land did not receive notices. So I have sixteen notices in my hand of opposition that were filled out by individuals that sent these here that couldn't make the meeting. My opposition to this project is regarding the property values. Once again, we were sold the same plot from the developer that this neighborhood was going to externally be retail, that we were going to have our townhomes, which we do. Those are out towards the university side. They are an eyesore for our community as it is. Then there's the single-family homes. It was supposed to expand out. We were supposed to have a pool, a park, walking trails, and I know that doesn't have anything to do with this meeting, but this plot of land is where all of that was promised. Then you go to the apartment complex, which, again, all the communities in Lubbock have, but we don't need to have additionals in ours. We were sold single-family homes in an area that was going to be single-family homes. Our property values are not going to go up any further if you continue to bring in apartments or duplexes. Number two, it's going to decrease the appeal of our community. You know, we're shown something and, and the few houses that are there now, it's not going to be the same appeal that we were shown and that we bought into. Number three, I don't know if anybody tries to drive that area, but it's horrendous. I was almost late to this meeting because it took me thirty minutes to get across one hundred and thirtieth and into my neighborhood, turning off of one hundred and thirty-seventh, where they want to put this plot. If you drive it during school hours, the traffic on Indiana and university will back clear up to Woodrow Road. It's atrocious for us to turn out either Indiana or university. There's only three exits as it is. If there's an emergency, forget about it because there's going to be a serious event because you can't get anywhere. If you want to come into the community and go across the one hundred and thirtieth, you will be backed up past one hundred and twentieth, and that's on a good day. So, again, traffic is one of our biggest concerns as well. I'm speaking on behalf of another homeowner who's sitting in the back who didn't want to come up. She lives at two-nine-two-five one hundred and thirty-sixth Street. She is owner occupied as well, Kelsey Wagner. And then my father, who also owns the neighborhood. Can I give these to somebody? Does anybody want these letters from the neighborhood?
Hi, I'm Mark Wagner. I live at twenty-nine twenty-sixth one hundred and thirty-fifth Street. My wife and I followed one of our daughters down here, got recruited to move to Lubbock. We thought it was a great town, we were going to move south, and we picked out this piece of ground and built a home on it because it has no alleys. Not that I dislike alleys, but I love the look of no alleys. It's cleaner, it's much more kept. My house literally will sit right next to this property that they want to change. I bought this lot and paid a premium for that corner. I didn't pay that to have that built across the street when it was told it was going to be single-family dwelling, and we'd have amenities located with it. So, in traffic, you can go traffic any day. You can also talk about the development and the lack of care and maintenance of the property. I'd love to see it get built homes. Then we wouldn't have weeds and all the other trash we have. But changing it now, I think, is a disservice to the people that have built homes there in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Toy Foriswall, and I hadn't planned on speaking, but here I am. So, I just wanted to bring a little personal, my little personal thoughts to this. We live at twenty-nine twenty one hundred and thirty-sixth Street, so actually close to them, we didn't know them though. And we live three houses on one hundred and thirty-sixth from the Elgin, Elgin one hundred and thirty-sixth intersection. You know, we've al- already had problems with the dirt that's just everywhere, the weeds that come up and you can't see stop signs, things like that. And I can't believe, I can't imagine me or my husband living there with tractors and more bulldozers and, and things like that going on, building a big apartment complex. We retired and moved from Dallas to here. I was born and raised in Tahoe, and we came back here because I've got a daughter and granddaughter here. And so we bought our house because we liked the neighborhood. We were totally sold on the idea that we were going to have a beautiful house and right across the street, or two houses down, would start the walking trails and swimming pool, community pool, and things like that, which, that hasn't happened yet, and now we're told that we may have to wait longer for that. But this land that's within the zone would take up that. And we've already had the landowner say that, or he's already changed the location twice. But this is the last piece of land that our streets would connect to, that would have that walking trail and swimming pool, something nice. We, you know, we put really all of our retirement money into this house, into, into this neighborhood, and I don't want an apartment across the street. You've also got, as was stated, on one hundred and thirty-fifth, from the school, the elementary school, Cooper Elementary, all the way down one hundred and thirty-fifth to Elgin, you've got your cars that are non-stop, I mean, parked over kind of on the side with their lights on waiting on the kids. You've got little, little kids running down the sidewalks, some occasionally will get out in the street and then somebody else telling them to get back over, but they're running down the sidewalks to get to their parents' car, which is twenty-five and thirty cars down the street. It's just going to get worse if we put an apartment complex. It's already not safe for those kids. I don't know how to fix it as it is right now, but something's going to have to give, or we're going to have, we're going to have problems and accidents. So I worry about that for them. I guess that's all. I just, I wanted to just tell you personally what I thought about it. And I'm, but my main worry is the kids and the lack of, or the amount of cars daily, I mean, because it's parked in the morning, and then if you've got mothers that are really close to the, the start of school time, you know, and they're backed up fifteen and twenty, well, they let their kids out wherever they're at on the street, and the kids go running toward the school. It's, it's just not safe. And if you put an apartment complex out there and between the elementary and the middle school, I would say sixty-five, seven to seventy-five percent of those units are going to have multiple kids that go to school, one of those schools. So, I just worry about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
My name is Robert Foriswall, that's my wife. I live at twenty-nine twenty-one thirty-sixth Street. When we bought our house, we knew there was an apartment complex down by Indiana. But when you start putting them that close to a neighborhood, the people have paid good money for houses, they take care of their yard, and then you're willing to put a, maybe eventually, a low-income apartment complex. I mean, every, we're from Dallas. Every one of them turned in, there was a real nice apartment complex when it opened, and then it became low income. It lowered everybody's property value and nobody could get rid of their house. Nobody wanted to buy a house next to that where there's cars on blocks. So you're, you're killing our property value by putting an apartment complex across the street. We all in our neighborhood over here call that tumbleweed alley. You wouldn't believe the tumbleweed, nobody's taking care of them. They're, they're in our yard every day. They put a stop sign up and you can't even see it because of the tumbleweeds are so high. I mean, we're not taking care of what we should be taking care of. We're worried about a multifamily apartment that nobody knows what they're going to build. I have a suggestion for that thirty-four acres. Why don't we build, there's plenty of room for a parking lot. We can have a dog park there. We can have a park there for the young kids that live in our neighborhood around one hundred and thirty-seven, one hundred and thirty-six, one hundred and thirty-five. It's, there's getting to be enough kids. If you've ever seen the traffic going to that elementary school, there's plenty of kids that could use that. Plus, if you go by there at five o'clock, there's people there, they're practicing their pee-wee, I guess you would call it pee-wee football, that's what we called it, all over the schoolyard. I mean, they're, they're double, they're playing soccer, they're playing football, they're all bumping into each other when we could move them to a park at that location instead of an apartment complex. I, I've, I've, I've driven around Lubbock, I don't know a whole lot about Lubbock yet. I still get lost. But it seems to be that there's plenty of apartments already. There's not going to be tech students, it's too far away from campus. That's what they're planning on hoping to give it to, I'm sure. I just, I just don't believe that an apartment, multi-apartment, multi-apartment complex is going to improve the greatness of Lubbock, Texas on thirty-four acres. I just think there's better uses for it, and I don't, I'm, I'm against it. So I just wanted to let you know my thoughts, so thank you all very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition at this time? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Colvin Hobbs, and my address is two-nine-one-one one hundred and thirty-fourth Street. I did not get a notification about this, and I'm pretty sure I'm out of the boundaries of this development, but I wanted to speak my mind anyways. I didn't confirm if I was in the boundaries or not, so. And I bring a new perspective to it because I am probably the youngest homeowner within the area. I'm twenty-three years old. And the thing that I want to bring across, because I want to save all time, and I, y'all have heard them and made their statements, and I agree one hundred percent with their statements and what they've said, but the perspective is, is what do apartments bring to an area? What apartments bring is young people, and young people do not want to be in an area where there is nothing to do. So this is still a developing area. We are still making things out here, we're still building things out here, and there's going to be annoyances like tumbleweeds. But the point is, is that if we build an apartment complex here, it's not going to really cater to these young people like it's supposed to, and it's instead going to cater to people that want to be the low-income variety. So they want a place that's cheap to live in, they want a place that is going to be good for them for the short term. However, that's not what we want in our neighborhood. We want our neighborhood to be nice, we want it to be clean, we want it to be friendly, we want our kids to be safe. So what I'm saying is, is that an apartment here just doesn't really make sense. So that is all I have to say. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition at this time? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone who wishes, wishes to speak in favor?
I just want to chime in. I had no idea there was so much opposition. You know, we were notice, we were given notice that there were two letters of opposition. We attempted to call those two people and had, had no luck in that. And so, you know, I think it's, if it is worth it, we, we would consider postponing it and possibly meeting with the neighborhood if that's needed. Just throwing that out there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. We can't discuss. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Not, we'll close the public hearing. For matter of discussions, do we have a motion?
For the purpose of discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. I want to say, first of all, I want to explain something, legally, when we move to discuss, we have to approve it, so it's not necessarily how we're going to vote. That's just the wording we have to use, so don't, don't panic just yet. I think we'd all love parks everywhere, but this is a property that somebody spent money on, and to ask that person to build a park so that you benefit from it and they make no money from it is not realistic. It's not city-owned property, so the city can't put a park there. The city can't buy it to put a park there because we'd have to raise property taxes to buy all the land that people would want to make parks out of. So, so what I'm talking about is that there are certain realities here that are sort of out of our control. This is owned by somebody who wants to put medium-density residential. Now, medium-density residential is not necessarily a high-density residential apartment, and so I think that it's, it speaks highly of AMD, that they want to meet with the neighbors and work things out. And I think you should take advantage of that and meet with them and tell them what your concerns are. They don't have to do that. So if, if he's offering to do that, he's doing that in good faith, and you should, you should take advantage of that, because we don't see that all the time. We see it occasionally, and so I think that, that it, it's something that the neighborhood should do. If he, if he, if he's saying, well, we're willing to work with the neighborhood, that's what they mean. And so that's basically what I have to say about it.
Thanks, Susan.
I'd second that. I commend you for being willing to meet with the neighborhood and see if you can't compromise, so.
Will, question. Are these single-story, two-story structures?
Single-story.
Single, all single?
All single. I believe the maximum height on MDRs, three stories, right, Kristen? Is that right?
So are they, I can't tell from the map, are they duplexes, or what are they exactly?
I mean, they're sort of like duplexes. They're, you know, a mix of six and eight-unit clusters that face inside and all have garages. I mean, I call them apartments.
Six or eight-unit clusters. No trailers, though.
No trailers.
No trailers, so.
And it's, and it is, you know, from an apartment standpoint, I think it's lightly, you know, the density of it is pretty light compared to some that we've brought before.
Compared to some apartments, it's very light.
If this were to be developed in a single-family, I just ran some quick math, I think you'd probably be looking at one hundred and sixty to one hundred and seventy single-family homes, so, you know, there'd still be added traffic. single-family homes, so, you know, there'd still be added traffic with that. Maybe not as much as, as what we'd be proposing, but.
This company that you're representing, are they the company that, that built the residential area that these people are? So, whoever built that couldn't promise what was gonna happen on this land.
I had no idea of that promise either. That wasn't used to me.
And so, I think that's something the neighborhood needs to know, is like, whoever sold you that land...
That's correct.
Is not necessarily the person who was in charge of this land.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. Good point.
I'll say, so, if you're willing to postpone, I'm not gonna waste a lot of time on this. I'll save my breath, but the, regardless if it's single-family, multifamily apartments, it doesn't matter what it is, the common denominator in all this is the infrastructure. Because I, I agree with the neighborhood and I disagree on some things. What I agree on, I, the gentleman that was talking about the, I drive down one-hundred-and-thirty-seventh. It's embarrassing for Lubbock. We should be embarrassed. It looks terrible. There are berms on both sides. There are weeds sitting up eight feet high. You can't see stop signs. My son has football practice down there every week. I look at these apartments, and I think of the, the load it's gonna put on the streets. Now, this isn't necessarily, this isn't you, Will. This, I'm just saying, for the, for, if any city council members wanna listen in on it, but question, and you may not know the answer to this, who's responsible, responsible for extending Elgin up to Loop Eighty-Eight? The city? Is that?
Well, it'll be the adjacent, the properties adjacent to that right-of-way will each have to build their half. So, not this property.
One thing, and I don't know if we can do this, but with a development this size, with the parking count or the unit count that I'm seeing, we should be able to go to the developer and say, you're gonna be responsible for extending Elgin up to Loop Eighty-Eight. Because what I see from this site plan is ninety percent of that traffic is not gonna go towards the school where all the moms are dropping kids off, it, they're gonna go to Indiana. And what we've done in that part of Lubbock is, it's a disaster. It's the chicken and the egg thing. The development, we, we let the development go. We said no to develop. We weren't gonna say no to development, but the infrastructure couldn't keep up. And so, when you're down to two lanes on Indiana at fifteen-eight-five, or Loop Eighty-Eight... Or the, the, ma'am, I don't know if she left, but the lady that was up here saying it took her thirty minutes to get here, I, I've experienced that every day. Same thing on University. It's a four-way stop sign at University in fifteen-eight-five. That's embarrassing. We should, we should fix that. So, anyways, I know that this is an early design. I know that it's gonna be three, four months of drawing plans after it's approved, and then you've got, I don't know how quickly they, availability of water and sewer and roads are, but it's gonna be a long construction project. You may not have the answers to that, but I bet you, I bet everybody and Dr. Pepper that this is done before Loop Eighty-Eight's done. And it's gonna, and there's no extension, or, you know, Indiana's already... Let me parlay this into one other thing. Proposition A for all the people in here is coming up. Am I allowed to talk about this?
We should really stick to the zoning case that's before us.
Pay attention to Proposition A whenever it comes up this next election, because this is what I'm talking about. It's, the development is outpacing the infrastructure, and it's what causes all this struggle. The, the development's good. We want development. This is a good project. Where I disagree with the neighborhood on several cases is we, back in the day, you may have been on here, but it was, we had apartments on one-hundred-and-fourteenth across from Orchard Park. And this same, almost exact same scenario. Those apartments are great. They actually raised the property values over there. I don't know if y'all remember people in their backyards backing up to one-hundred-and-fourteen. It was the exact opposite. It had a great turnout, and it looks fantastic, and it's well-kept, and I'm glad to hear that this is single-family with garages, 'cause that also, that helps me in my decision. I would almost like to see an exterior elevation of the buildings to see really what that, if, if you have that, if, have they made the investment a little bit deeper into that? Because...
I don't have that, but I mean, if we postpone, that's something I can get, for sure.
If you're willing to.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I mean, we're, like I said, I had no idea of the, the opposition.
So, I don't, again, I'll, a short story long, sorry. The infrastructure's terrible in this part of Lubbock, and I do think that the neighbors would be more willing to accept more development if they didn't have to sit at a stop sign for thirty minutes getting across the street at a major intersection. So, anyways.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I'm getting off the subject there.
I think extending Elgin to, to Loop Eighty-Eight would be ideal, again.
You gotta have some more outlets. You gotta relieve pressure for that area.
But I mean, that's something that we can...
Now, it doesn't help you whenever they go to, when it forces them to go to university, but still. The apartment idea, I, I don't, I don't necessarily dislike. I like the single-story. I like the garage. That's, that's, that's an improvement. I really do wish, I don't know who, somebody needs to cut the weeds down. Even if this doesn't go forward, I'm surprised that the city hasn't forced them to do that yet, but, anyway. Sorry, that's my, that's my ball of joy.
I would like, I would like to go ahead, since we've got it, that we've got lots of questions. They're willing to do it. I'd like to see if we could amend our motion and postpone this to a date certain to give parties a chance to communicate with each other and get some ideas of what's, what's going on to see if they can come up with some type of compromise.
Can I ask, sorry. Now, if we meet and there's site-plan-specific things that we agree on, like, you know, more trees or certain fence types, is that something that we can add to future, the next hearing, or are we?
Add it as a condition of approval?
Right.
There, there are certain site-specific conditions that we may be able to add. We can discuss that.
Okay, I'm just trying to, before we meet, I'm trying to understand what exactly we can...
But I think it'd be beneficial if you develop the plan, the exterior elevation to show the neighborhood, just to...
Well, are you asking if you can bring something back that looks different than what you have today?
Not so much, but if there's, you know, maybe more trees along a certain side or a different fence or something that we can...
Just a more developed site.
Say, we will, you know, do this.
Sure.
I know we used to do that, but kind of gotten away from it, but I'm just trying to understand what we can discuss with the neighborhood, change.
How do we do this?
So, Susan, you've made the motion. Do you wanna make, do you wanna amend it to postpone to date certain?
Yes. What date are we talking about?
November seventh is the next meeting.
I would like to amend my motion to postpone this request to the November seventh meeting.
We'll second.
Okay. Do we have any further discussions on that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, it will be postponed until eleven. Y'all see, set something up with them and what we can do. Thank you, Will.
Thanks, Will.
Next is item three-point-six, zone case number two-six-five-one-eight.
This is zone case twenty-six fifty-one B. The applicant is West Star Commercial Realty for SPSM LTD. Requesting to rezone from IP to HC. We've sent out fourteen notifications, receiving zero in favor, zero in opposition. This property is located west of Frankfurt Avenue, north of Fifty-seventh Street. Here's an aerial view of the property. To the north and south is commercial businesses. To the east is a self-storage facility, and to the west is a city park. The current zoning is industrial park IP. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial. Here are photos of the property and its surroundings. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land use. The proposed zone change to HC would be in conformance with the commercial designation. This request would be appropriate next to adjacent land uses in HC zoning to the east. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. It is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The proposed rezoning location will be along Frankfurt Avenue. Frankfurt Avenue is designated as a minor arterial. Staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions.
Basically, this is a down zone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his or her representative here in which to speak? Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Kevin Watt, fifty-seven oh-nine Seventy-Ninth Street, with West Star Commercial Realty. This is one of those deals where we went into a non-conforming use, and we have retail shops inside of industrial area, which does not allow retail any longer. It's not a problem now, but if I have a tenant that moves out and I've gotta get a permit, I would not be in a conforming use with retail. So, it's not really a problem for me right now, but I could see that being a problem for somebody else. So, I think that when we come across a case like this, it needs to be a quicker-type deal, because consider the fact that if I put a tenant in and they have a hundred-and-twenty days of construction, and all of a sudden I'm in a non-conforming use, not by my own fault, but by the city, then I'm gonna have to put ninety days in front of a hundred-and-twenty days, and it's gonna take me two-hundred-and-ten days to get a tenant finished out. That loses business for the city of Lubbock, and it's really not a good method, so if we could speed that up somehow. It's, it's not affecting me right now, but I could see it affecting someone else, so I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Seen none. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Okay, none. We'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? It's a down zone. Down zone's always good. Is there any other discussion on it? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. The last one is item three-point-seven, zone case number three-five-zero-eight.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Shane Spencer, and this is Zone Case Thirty-five oh-eight. The applicant is fifteen-eighty-five in Frankfurt Discount RV, and they are requesting a zone change from SF-two to LI. They are located north of one-hundred-and-twenty-second Street and east of Frankfurt Avenue, and we have sent thirty-six notifications out. We have received back three of those in favor. This case was postponed from the last meeting, and I'll point out that the letters in favor were received from our previous mail-out. Here is that notification map. And here's the aerial map. There's a commercial building, and homes lie to the west. Vacant land is to the north, and rental warehouses to the south and east. Here's that zoning map. There are properties owned SF-two and heavy commercial district to the west, industrial park district to the north, with land to the south and east is outside of city limits. The future land use map designates this property for low-density residential land uses. And here are photos of the subject and surrounding property. The future land, future land use map designates this area for low-density residential land uses, and while this request is not conformed to this designation, it would be appropriate along a thoroughfare and adjacent to existing zoning districts and land uses, and this request is in moderate conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change being in conformance with the zoning ordinance, the property is located on a thoroughfare. Additionally, this would bring the existing land uses into conformance. Essentially, they have annexation zoning, and now they're wishing to bring that into conformance. The proposed zone change would also be compatible with surrounding area, would not change the character of the existing development, and it's located along Frankfurt Avenue, which is designated as a minor arterial by the master thoroughfare plan. Staff recommends approval on this case, and I can take any questions at this time.
Kind of just on this, we've had, in the last few meetings, we've had a lot of properties right in this area kind of similar to this, to changing, and I guess a lot of it was because of annexation and stuff, and then trying to fit in. It seems like it's been kind of a patchwork quilt in a way, and we've been trying to, to bring it in.
Yes.
Just kind of my comment or thoughts. Okay, thank you. We'll now open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his or her representative here, please?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Trevino. I am the representative for Discount Storage and RV, fifty-six twenty-five County Road, seventy-four-ten. We are asking because we are currently already having flex space shops and RV that are, are shops that are already in that location, so we are just asking for the rezoning so that we could go ahead and actually get that under, instead of being a commercial, go ahead, have it actually, or residential to actually have it into like a commercial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seen none. Anybody to speak in favor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? I think it's clean enough to go. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, our joint hearing with the city council was last week, so I'm happy to go through the amendments one by one, if you would like for me to, or if you just have any questions or any discussion.
Actually, I think we've heard it.
We've heard it.
Are we in discussion or doing it?
No, you're, you're welcome. Go ahead.
Okay, so... Yeah. I, I thought it was, we covered it pretty well in the joint hearing, and I, I didn't have anything that jumped out at me that I disagreed with.
Before we got to the joint hearing.
We, and we've all read it for the past...
So, here's Terry. I have concerns with the fact that we are on the industrial, leaving, saying that we will allow them to match what's in the neighborhood when what we have in some of those neighborhoods is atrocious. And I am speaking District One and District Two primarily, so I think we need to be very careful with that decision. I think we, by requiring people to upskill or up, improve the look of it, it's going to then, in turn, as these businesses change and sell, change the look of that neighborhood. So, that was the one, and then the point system for the trees. I haven't written in my car. I'm so sorry. But I looked at, I went when we left, and I went to Covenant and looked at the parking lot that we've just built, and five trees would not have done anything. And so, but the point system allows that when you do that, and then also just the mono species. We have to be careful with mono species, and by allowing it, and you can wipe out an entire plant culture in that area. So, those were my concerns.
I'd like to speak to the contextual landscaping and the industrial thing, because I, I listened to a conversation about this afterwards as well. As I understand it, what they mean is that, you know, if the industrial area is right next to a residential, they still have to put landscaping in there. That this is, that the contextual exception would be if it is not adjacent to the residential, and if it's not, i- if there's no other landscaping around, just plunked down in the middle of, and I, and Terry actually gave a specific current example where that's happening, where it's just plunked down in the middle of the industrial park. There's nobody else who's had to put in any landscaping. It would add a financial burden, and nobody's going to see it except other people in the industrial park. And so, my understanding is that the, the, the idea of the contextual landscaping requirement is that it addresses those specific instances and not anything that somebody in a residential area would see.
But by, by adding in the plants and adding in the things that we're requiring, we are decreasing our pollution over there. We are adding value to that area in lots and lots of ways, not just in a look. That saves the developer money is not my concern. So, it's more a concern about the neighborhood.
So, I would, I would just make a counterpoint to that, that if, if that does, if what you're saying happens, then there's a likelihood that makes that not affordable, and now that building be, becomes and remains vacant, which you don't want either, you know, so.
It's lowering our expectations to meet.
Well, and I think, I think in principle, I agree with you. But again... But again, if we, if we look at what, what we can achieve and what we can't achieve, you know, sometimes we have to make some compromises. I would love to see landscaping everywhere, you know, I, I would love to see buffer yards that are fifty feet across and, you know, I mean, I would love to see all of that. But there are also pragmatic things that have to be considered. And, and, and to just reject, to, let me think how to say this so that I say exactly what I mean. To reject, um, something because it's not the ideal is not always going to help us accomplish anything. We just get stalemated. And so, so I would, I would love to see more landscaping and more trees because I agree with you about the pollution. But I think we also have to take steps that we can achieve to get somewhere. And so that's-
And I thought that's what the U D C was doing, was taking steps to get us there.
Yeah.
So that was kind of the point of why it was written in here. And so this is completely adding, um, a whole way of giving them a way out.
No, I, I don't, I don't think I agree with that because again, the idea is that it's contextual. It's not, it's like now nobody has to put in any trees. It's just specific situations.
It's more the exception than the rule.
It's more the exception than the rule. That's my understanding.
When we advance this, does it have to be all of it? Like, are we able to say this is a concern?
Um, you all will, somebody will make a motion and you all will consider all of this. And depending on what you pass through your motion is what will move on to council for your recommendation.
Is there a way to, so this is to the rest of the commission. I mean, is there a way to, to tighten the exceptions? So that it's not, you know, like, oh, here's my way out, here's my loophole.
And I don't know that, what I'm saying is that it has to be an extreme. I'm just, any improvement to these areas, whether it's huge or small, is an improvement to these areas. You know, and I live in these districts. This is my district. And so seeing, and just saying, well, it's always looked this way, so we're just going to leave it looking this way is, is not ever going to change. But it also is looking at the five trees. And so that's why I said there's portions for me at the point system that I think are concerned on.
You know, it's the whole, I see that, yeah, because when we started the U D C, for as long as we've been dealing with it, I, like, five years ago, we kind of got, I'm sorry. We kind of got to a point where it was, we were trying to do too much. And it's teaspoons, man. Just start small, baby steps. And we're, we knew we were going to get things wrong. We knew we weren't going to get it all right to begin with. But it, God almighty, it was so much better than what we were working with. It was the step in the right direction and now here we are making a bunch of adjustments to it. Which is good. We need to continue doing that. But the, the baby steps, I think's better because you're right. It's kind of, I know exactly what you're talking about. Five trees, most people don't understand the visual of it until they see it. And then they're like, oh, that's five trees? Yeah, no, that's stupid. We're not going to do that. And it's, sometimes that's what it's going to have to take. So, I don't know. I missed the joint meeting, so I apologize. I don't have a whole lot to add. But small adjustments is better than a big giant adjustment. And then we look up and we've caused greater damage whenever, it could have been something much smaller in retrospect, so. I don't know. I don't know if that helps you.
I think the most interesting part to me in that was hearing the landscape architects' views and how they have concerns, not just, you know, listening to, of course, our developer side, but listening to the landscapers saying, we have concerns about mono species. We have concerns that your point values are too high. And so I thought that was just, and so actually, you know, taking time to, I went and met with some landscape architects about this because it picked my curiosity, but to hear the concerns. And I think that would be my only thing is that I really hope that we would take that.
But you're actually going here now. We're putting language in that we didn't have anything in at the first place, too.
Well, no, on this one, but on the other ones, yeah.
On that one, too, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may. May I?
Yes.
So Terry, if you have specific language that you would recommend versus what's before you tonight, you could make a motion to that effect to adopt the changes, except, as presented, except for this section, you know, you would change this wording, et cetera. And you all can vote on that tonight if you'd like.
I would just say, to, to, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So the architects, the landscape architects are the ones that came up with these amendments? Some of the, like, the, like, the proposed?
There, there was a group of the Lubbock Alliance of Landscape Architects spearheaded by Alex Scarborough of Tom Street Place. Dustin Wright, another landscape architect at the joint hearing, was not a part of that group. And he had some differing views from that group. But yes, the majority of these amendments were discussed and came from the Lubbock Alliance of Landscape Architects.
So you're saying that those, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying. You had, you had other ar- landscape architects that had a different opinion?
Well, it, it was really with the point system and allowing, and then, and then also- And it was increasing the point system for some of those, so it would allow less landscaping, which is great in some circumstances. But we were talking about a thirty-plus parking lot. And how with the current point system that they're recommending, you could have five trees and that's all that would be required and because of the increase in the point system. So that was the concern. And then also allowing it to be, um, specific, which gave landscape. And you hope that a developer will hire a landscape person and not just develop it themselves. But the concern is if they don't, what they're putting in could actually be worse for us than if we had no trees at all.
So, um, I think that the objection was, uh, to having, if you didn't require that they had a diversity of trees, that you would end up with a monoculture. Whereas the Landscape Architectural Alliance said that there needs to be an exception for, for example, if you have a more formal planting where you have an L A of, of, you know, Italian cypresses going down, you know, that, that, that there had to be a way to allow for that as well. And I don't know if it's, it's, you know, you could apply for a specific use of, you know, no. So, uh, and I, and I, again, I guess I feel like we need to be careful that perfection doesn't become the enemy of the good here. Where we, we, um, if, if we say, you know, you, you can't have a monoculture, that is going to put some people at odds. Right. If you say, we're going to allow the occasional monoculture, that's going to put other people on edge, you know. And so I think at some point we have to move forward and say, let's come up with the best plan we can. And it's not going to be perfect, um, but it moves us forward. It's already going to be better than it was. And I agree with you. I think that we need more trees everywhere. I need, that we need a diversity of trees everywhere so we're not having elm trees dying all over Lubbock. And I agree that where we can, there should be more and better buffer yards around industrial parks. Um, and that parts of Lubbock really need to be lifted up and made better. And I think we're getting there. And so, you know, we just keep trying to get there, is what we do. So, and I don't think that the purpose of the contextual landscape requirement was to give people a loophole to get out of planting landscape features in the industrial areas.
Then what would be the point of having it?
For very specific reasons, where it doesn't affect residential areas. And I understand, it's like, you know, we would like it if they all had more buffer yards. But, you know, as Tanner pointed out, if it gets too cost prohibitive, it shuts people down. And that's not good either.
Mr. Chair, may I make a recommendation?
You may.
Maybe if somebody wants to make a motion and start discussion in, in that direction.
Okay.
Oh, wait, okay. Uh, for the purpose of discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
So on the contextual landscape requirement, is there a way to word it so that it is more restrictive? So it's like in this, you know, extraordinary circumstance, then you are not required to have landscaping?
So I will say, the way it's worded currently states where an infill project is constructed. The definition of infill in the U D C means redevelopment of a vacant property surrounded on a minimum of two sides by existing development. So if it was vacant, surrounded on three sides, they're doing all of the requirements.
Okay.
But to your question, yes. I mean, we could, if they, if you want it even more restrictive than that, we could explore options for that.
So if we start placing restrictions and do this, does it open it back up for more public hearings and stuff?
No.
No.
Okay. Well, I mean, realistically, it's going to go to the city council and it really doesn't that, I'm saying, so. You know, I, I'm on the record of saying, so I'm good with that. We can vote.
Does anybody else have any other discussion?
Do we need to amend the, the motion? We're good?
And so do we need to also, before we vote, do we need to discuss the part about more points for trees and so on?
Is there a specific item number you want me to go to? Because this is the one for the parking lot.
It's the same.
Perfect, okay.
Broken down to, like, certain tree this, certain tree that, and they kind of combined it more.
And just by adding those point system, it just bumped it so high.
Well, you could, I mean, what if the, whoever was in disagreement with the Landscape Architects of America, I mean, we can, he need, they made, those two parties need to consult because then you're, then you're going to get into this, well, that one landscape architect, like, favors those trees over those trees and it's going to start splitting hairs.
We wanted to have diversity. It's just it's lowering the point system back down to where it originally was.
And I will just say, in addition to the points, you still have to meet the minimum lot area requirement. So five trees probably will not cover your ten percent of the lot area required.
That's why I like five trees. Okay, y'all, okay, so we've had a motion and a second. Are y'all ready to call the question? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay.
Yep.
It is seven twenty-three and we are adjourned.